Matt Zacher, Thad Kubitschak is absent. Also in the council chambers, we have Joe Terry, Dean Veneman, Tom Raume, Sherri Avenson, Jake Kadenach, Mayor Blazer, and Jay Bumpkin. So, second agenda item, discussion and possible action on the development of a transportation utility. I'll open the floor to discussion.
Thad's the council president who would actually call the meeting to order for the committee of the whole.
Chief wanted to nominate interim council president.
Did Thad ask you to?
He did not, no.
Yeah, he's not available. Yeah, see what Sue recommends.
Okay, calling the meeting, the meeting of the committee of the whole to order at 5:15 And what are your wishes as far as somebody to take the meeting, be in control of the meeting?
I'll make a motion to have Ryan run the meeting as long as he's doing public works as well.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay. So, the meeting's been called to order. Item number two on the agenda, discussion regarding the development of a transportation utility. So, I'll open up the floor. Any committee members have anything? Mr. Blazer.
I guess maybe I suggest Mr. Terry kind of opening up with his presentation and then see if there's any discussion.
Sure.
My suggestion.
Mr. Terry.
Thank you. So, just before the council meeting, we did have a number of questions that were developed and answers that were built to answer those questions. I kind of wanted to start there and see if those questions and answers satisfied the needs of the committee of the whole. And if there are further questions or extensions of questions based on what you saw, if there's a desire for me to go through these, I can. Otherwise, we have met as staff and have some recommendations that resulted from these questions, and I'd be happy to discuss that as well. But I thought I'd start with that transportation utility Q and A and see if there's any, anything staff can help with on that at this time.
I just have one question, Joe, and I know that the biggest thing that was different from prior suggestions is leaving the maintenance budget in the general fund, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do you want, do you need to know the reasons kind of why that's suggested now to leave it in? Because initially, we were suggesting that that be part of the utility.
Yeah, if you could expand on that, that'd be great.
Sure. So, what was brought up was a question about the legality of a utility. And should the city decide to create a transportation utility, what would happen? Worst-case scenario, the city gets sued and loses, and a court decides that the transportation utility can't exist. Our finance director reminded us that the levy limits that are imposed has a very short time period. If the levy is reduced, for example, to transfer what was budgeted for maintenance in the general fund currently and transferred into the transportation utility to be paid for by the utility, that if the utility were found to be, that it can't exist, the city really has no recourse to put those funds back in the general fund. Once they're out, they're out under the current state law. There's some short-term exception to that, but it's limited. And what you can bring back is relatively small. The amount that is proposed to come out of the budget's also relatively small, but that exemption is very short-term. And if there were to be a legal proceeding, speculatively, it would take longer than that amount of time. So, the risk there is that the city would not have funding available to perform our routine maintenance activities. And so, really, at that time, after some internal discussion, it's like, well, that's probably too much of a risk. And that the dollars that were initially suggested for maintenance should stay in the general fund. And so, when Ellers put together the breakdown by land use before the last meeting, there were two documents that everybody received. One had, was just kind of a summary of all five scenarios. Scenario one, that manages costs related to special assessments. In essence, it allows the city to eliminate special assessments for regular street construction projects. Scenario two, move that up a step, so it's both special assessments and borrowing, so that we wouldn't be borrowing for routines projects and we wouldn't have to do special assessments. So, that's scenario two. Scenario three was a sustainable transportation utility, and that we're replacing approximately three miles of streets per year, which is what would be required to be a sustainable, for the city's transportation system to be sustainable. With 150 miles of streets, replacing three miles a year makes us sustainable. We're, was that interjecting? Okay. Whereas right now, we're just a little under a mile a year. So, those were the three primary scenarios. And if you recall, scenario four was what we're doing now, looking at what loans look like moving into the future. And scenario five is what loans would look like if we developed a sustainable transportation utility. So, the other document that they sent was a request by staff. What would happen if we took, in general, scenario two, but we left those maintenance dollars in the general fund, and we added $450,000 towards a street resurfacing program? That's not full reconstruction. That gets us between a half a mile and a mile of resurfacing per year, in addition to the chip seal and some of the other maintenance work that we're doing. That gets us well on our way to becoming sustainable. And that process, just because of the amount of work that it would take to almost triple what we're doing, would take time anyway. It would take additional engineering time, additional staff time. So, we were trying to think of what could we practically do in the short term. So, by keeping the transportation, or keeping the maintenance out of the transportation utility and adding about 450,000, came up with this scenario, kind of two minus pluses was kind of what we're calling it. And that resulted in, for example, for average, or for a residential property, about $86 a year. So, that's kind of where staff is at right now as far as a recommendation, if we're looking to move forward with the utility. That financial advice is sound. I don't think any, I don't think it would be prudent to take the risk of the potential to lose. And if, and if we did end up in a court system and did lose, it reverts back to what we're doing today. So, you know, any additional work, obviously, would go away, but we'd be no worse off than we are today with special assessments and borrowing. Long answer, but I hope that helped.
I know you keep referring, like, if we're going to court, but we are not the first ones to do this. And there are other municipalities, and it hasn't been challenged, or if it has, it has stood up. So, it's, I just don't want to get the feeling that, ooh, you know, we're scared, maybe we shouldn't do this because of the court stuff, but it's been...
Right. I'm confident that, you know, the white paper put out by the League of Municipalities, there's a few municipalities in Wisconsin that have exercised the same authority, the home rule authority. One has, one is not doing a utility based on traffic generation, and one is. And both of those are still functioning. They're relatively new.
Are there any other questions on the transportation utility Q and A for Mr. Terry? Mr. Zacher.
Appreciate all the work you put into getting the answers to the questions that we did put together. And I think the League of Municipalities did a great job writing up, you know, papers on why they feel this is legal and hopefully keeps us safe, but we really don't, like, we're really, we really want to put ourselves in a position where, this is what I'm hearing, is we're not willing to take the chance that we're safe or not, because we don't really know. Because really, it comes down to, they could write all the white papers they want, but if somebody sues us, they can sue us over and over again until they find a way, I mean, you know, to say this isn't, this is wrong. This is just taxing us more money. So, we are worried about that to some degree, otherwise, we wouldn't be saying, we're going to keep the $900,000. I guess what I keep coming back to in my head is if we change the streets, if we increase and make all this money for streets through the transportation utility, but we don't decrease the taxes, the levy that we've been taxing, and again, I think, going back to when I was a kid, I asked my dad, like, what do we pay taxes for? And it was always the roads, you know, amongst, in parks and recent fire, but it was always the roads. But in reality, now, what we're saying is the roads are still going to be in the taxes, but are also going to be in the transportation utility. So, we're really not changing anything for the taxpayers.
Well, we are. So, in parts, you're correct. What we would be paying taxes for is all the maintenance activities that we're currently doing now, right? So, right now, we're plowing snow, we're patching streets, we're chip sealing, we're crack filling, we're doing curb maintenance, sidewalk maintenance. Those maintenance activities that are currently being funded by the general fund would continue to be funded by the general fund, just like they are now. The difference is, is number one, we're proposing that if this would move forward, we'd be proposing through the transportation utility that we wouldn't have special assessments that cost individual property taxpayers, you know, $4,000 to $7,000 for a residential home, you're on a corner lot, double it. If you've got a business with more frontage, it's more yet. That type of burden was what catalyzed the initial research to look into this in the first place. So, that's one thing that we get. And with 108 of our 150 miles of roads over 40 years old, if anyone's thinking that they're not going to get an assessment, well, maybe if they just got one, they won't. But it's inevitable, there's going to be a lot of assessments in years coming up if we don't, if something doesn't change. So, that's one thing. The other thing is currently, and the bonding costs, and our finance director's probably a little better person to describe this in great detail, but the city spends, what, $10, $15,000 a year just, just to administrate and borrow money. That's a lot of money, and most of those, most of that is for our street projects. And so, what the transportation utility does by getting rid of that is, it'll take a little time, but those costs start to go away. And we're spending, you know, roughly $30-ish thousand a year on interest on these projects right now. As those loans are expired, those costs go away. So, there will be a savings that, real savings from the levy, because the levy's paying for that right now. So, you've got your general fund that you're paying for through your tax dollars, but you're also paying for that debt. And so, you've got the debt savings, you've got the special assessment savings, and then, you know, the increase, when you look at, you know, $86 a year, less than $10 a month, for the city to become, or at least move in the direction of becoming sustainable for a transportation system, no doubt that there's going to be some people concerned, different businesses, potentially more. But I guess the question is, at the end of the day, is do we perform the public outreach? And does this make sense for the city of Wisconsin Rapids? I certainly think it does. I think, I mean, even at the national level, infrastructure and its slow degradation is becoming a more daily issue. And it takes two generations for that to happen. I mean, it takes 20 years of neglect and not replacing this public infrastructure on a routine, planned basis for it to start to catch up. And we're just getting to the point, and it's not just here, it's everywhere, we're getting to the point where it's catching up. And so, from my perspective, as Public Works Director, this is really a responsible move. It'll save the taxpayers dollars as compared to not going to a utility, because if we still have to borrow, there's no other recourse for us than to borrow money for our projects. And trying to get our bond rating better, trying to get our debt so that we're borrowing for unique and unusual projects, projects that, you know, a fire station, city garage, you know, larger projects that are unique, that's completely appropriate. But as a general rule of thumb, routine projects, if we can avoid that $30,000 a year in interest and $10,000 to $15,000 a year to process them, that's real savings, and those are dollars that could otherwise may be in taxpayers' pockets. So, another long answer to your question, but in short, there wouldn't be an immediate relief on the property taxes, but there would over a fairly short period of time, as these other loans go away and we're not taking out new loans for our routine street construction projects, to the tune of, you know, $1.5, $2 million a year.
So, sorry. I just wanted to clarify real quick. So, prevent, or maintenance, maintaining the existing roads is what we're going to pay for out of the levy?
Correct.
Building new roads is going to be paid for out of the transportation utility?
Correct.
And we'll have to be able to sell that to our residents, to the people paying those bills. And the hope is to be able to show them the savings of the special assessment and the savings of the cost of taking out loans every year?
Right.
In order to pay for the new roads?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kadenach?
Thank you. So, I just want to reiterate something I've mentioned each time we've spoken about the transportation utility. I personally believe that this is something that should be brought up at a county level. This surrounding cities, townships, villages around us, I feel would benefit greatly from us adding on a transportation utility, because it's just going to be one more tax the city of Wisconsin Rapids pays that they don't. We've seen this with, all over town, including recently with the Aquatics Center. We pay for stuff, everybody comes here, but then they go home and they pay their lower taxes where they're from. If I'm a business looking to set up shop on a road, and I can see where it ends, and I get outside that line, and I don't have to pay this transportation utility, that could be another factor. I just feel like this needs to be taken up at a larger level than just add on to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And before, I'd feel comfortable, even considering that, public outreach is something that I feel we need to do. There hasn't been that many people from the public here engaged in this conversation. This is something I could see that could be much like a referendum to let the people decide if they would like to, because I think there's going to be a lot of people that, if we were to move forward with this, are going to see this come on, whether it's a utility bill or an additional tax, and it's just going to come right back up. I don't think it's going to swallow well. So, I'm not there yet. I think this could be something that could be put on the ballot to get feedback from the public on what their thoughts are, but that's my stance as of now.
Go ahead, Mr. Terry.
Yeah, so, just a quick response to that. A couple things. Obviously, public outreach is going to be an important part of this, and it's complicated. We've been reviewing this for months. This is not an easy topic to clarify and make simple so that our public outreach is quick and meaningful. If someone's got to read a book to comprehend what we're talking about, they're not going to. One of the things that, one of the side effects of a transportation utility is that the residential property taxpayers in the city of Wisconsin Rapids are paying for about 70% of the cost for the roads right now. Under transportation utility, that changes to in the mid-30%, right? And that's based on use. Right now, anytime someone's coming in from outside of the city and driving on city streets, you could argue that the city is subsidizing all the communities surrounding the city of Wisconsin Rapids. One of the, I think, beneficial side effects of a transportation utility is that starts to change. With a transportation utility, the school system, for example, would pay a utility fee. The city of Wisconsin Rapids taxpayers aren't the only ones that fund the school system. You know, we've touched on a few of the, you know, tried to pick out some of the higher-cost businesses that might have to deal with a transportation utility and what their fees may be. And if you look at a fast food place, for example, you know, to have to raise the price by a penny or a nickel for an item of fast food, not necessarily going to make them non-competitive. And they still need city services. I mean, if it's a business that doesn't need city services, they're not going to locate here anyway, because it's going to be cheaper trying to locate outside the city. But if they have to adjust their fees a small amount, all those people that live outside the city are contributing to that. And so, you know, what it's doing is it's shifting that tax burden that has, really since the '70s, been subsidized by the residential property taxpayer and shifts it to the property owner. And there are dollars from outside the city then that start coming in and paying an appropriate amount. Your businesses, for example, are paying taxes now, so they're contributing towards the cost of roads. But based on trips, it's highly subsidized, almost two to one, by the residential property taxpayers. So, like I said, as a side effect, if it were a countywide program, there would need to be countywide funding. And the city's interested, and the city has home rule, towns don't. City has home rule and can do something like this for the city's budget. I don't think practically it could ever happen where the county would do a transportation utility. If the county's going to do a transportation utility, it's going to fund county highways, because that's what the county pays for. And the towns would struggle. In fact, one of the, there's a town in Wisconsin that put together a transportation utility that's currently being sued, because towns don't have home rule, and there are different laws that affect towns as compared to cities. So, I think, in an ideal situation, it would be better if everybody were on the same playing But I think we're, with the hand that we're dealt, we don't have a whole lot of other choice if we want to make a change. And that's, you know, that's where this whole project started from, was a desire to try to get rid of some of those costly special assessments as a starting point.
So, Avenson?
Hmm, myself, as a taxpayer in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, I don't want to pay anymore, just like everybody else don't want to make it, pay anymore. But I, all of us, and you're lying if you can't admit it, everyone hears everybody. The roads suck, you know, this has a pothole, this has this, this has this, this has, we all hear it. I mean, I know we've all gotten calls, and I mean, just going to Walmart or going to a store, you hear these people constantly, "Well, the roads haven't been on a sustainable trail for how long?" I mean, like Joe says, we're borrowing for roads. I mean, there's only so much money. Every year, we get less federal money, state tax money. I mean, when we have homes and there's a hole in your roof, or the siding's fading and tearing off your home, or the concrete's busting, what do we do? You fix it. You don't let your house just keep falling apart, falling apart, falling apart, until all of a sudden, it's like, ugh, I don't have money to fix it now. I mean, the city of Wisconsin Rapids is a beautiful place. We need something sustainable, or roads to be sustainable in the future. We have a beautiful ballpark or recreation park coming. I mean, that's going to draw a lot of traffic here. I mean, how proud would you be when they come into town and say, oh, my gosh, you know, look at, they take care of the roads, you know? I mean, I mean, people see that in a community. When you have potholes and streets are, I mean, they're just tearing apart. I mean, we have to do something. We just have to do something. They can't keep on the same track that they are, or we're going to keep borrowing and borrowing and borrowing. I mean, how much can you borrow every year? That's just, I don't know. I hear that from people that don't live in the city. I mean, they just, it's just a common, I don't, to me, a common sense thing, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Veneman?
Yeah. I think, and Joe, you did hit it on the head, is that there's not going to be any immediate impact to the taxpayer. In fact, well, technically, it'll probably go up, because they'll have a utility now, albeit small. But it, I think the, and Mr. Kadenach talking about the community outreach and things, I think that the general population has no idea how much we borrow for our streets as it is. And that's going to make it a tough sell. There has to be some kind of benefit to the general taxpayer on this. And it's going, I'm in favor of it, but I'm almost, I was, I'm in favor of it like a two and a half, so. And from the beginning, when we talked, I didn't think maintenance was part of it, because we talked about snow removal and such not being part of it. I thought that was the case when we talked. But it seems now that it's hard for, it's going to be hard to sell to the public if they're not seeing any kind of immediate impact.
I think if, you know, one of the immediate impacts is knock on some of the doors of the folks that have recently received a special assessment.
Oh, absolutely. So, but are we going to, I didn't mean to interrupt, but that's the thing. So, now they're, are we going to retro?
Right. So, well, so what I've done, and we've talked about it briefly at the last Public Works meeting, and I thought, for the purpose of discussion, and the fact that we are running out of time to some extent, that if this is going to proceed, there's a lot of logistics once it gets approved. We have the ordinance language to draft, we have to work with our staff in developing, and, you know, we will have the information from Ellers and R.A. Smith, but we have to put that into an implementation where we're confident, we have to understand the method completely. Right now, we have a consultant that's developing that for us, and we have to work with Water and Light to, you know, to... with Water and Light to, you know, to perform the billing. And so, I did take a stab, and I'll pass these out. This is a rough draft at this point. And it hasn't had, we, we don't have the city attorney's review of this. So, what I've done is I've spent quite a bit of time looking through our stormwater utility, looking through the, um, the village of, of Peewalkies, uh, transportation utility, and our own Q and A, and have, have developed a draft. And in that draft, it does address a number of things. It makes it, it makes it pretty flexible. So I'm going to pass this out. I'm not going to dwell on this because it's the first time you've had a chance to, to look at it, but, um.
So let me just understand, though, that the next step to this whole process would be drafting ordinance and policy language?
Well, the next step is really, yes. So, so it's kind of twofold. One is, one is identifying if, if a, a trip is a utility desired, is, is the method of billing using trips desired? And to what extent? What is the utility going to cover? And, and having the flexibility, and that's, that's what this ordinance potentially does, is allows the common council then to, if it thinks that it's too much or too little or whatever, what it can cover is very broad. It can cover maintenance activities excluding snow and ice control because that's statutorily not allowed. And, and street sweeping, that's part of the stormwater, but it defines what can be and maintenance can be. So, so if the desire is to go to a trip-based utility, we can do that. And then to the extent, when we're looking at scenarios, one, two, three, two minus a little bit, plus a little bit, that could be dealt with through the rates. That works a lot then like our, our wastewater utility. So I'm just going to pass this out.
Mr. Ray Allen.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, um, I think we're, yeah, we're at the point, I think, that, uh, and not that we have to vote up or down or whatever, but we have to put something together, and Joe's put a lot of time and effort into putting something together. This came about, and Joe mentioned it, uh, I think years ago, and it's kind of drifted and drifted and wallowed and wallowed, and it had to do with assessments, and it's gone nowhere. And finally, uh, Joe and whoever's come up with a different, maybe, way to look at this, and that's through this, uh, utility fund. Because we've listened to, have listened to for 30 years, people complain about, uh, special assessments. And so it's not the first time when somebody says, somebody's on a fixed income and they get a 12, $16,000 bill. I listened to that in 1992. I listened to that in 2021, 20. So it's nothing that's new. So my thought years ago was, well, let's spread out the special assessments. That went nowhere. I've still been trying to do that. Joe and the one, others that are smarter than me have come up with a different way, maybe. Transportation utility fund. But now we're afraid. Now we're afraid. And I see why. Because somebody there threatens, you go after me and I'm in my church, I'm going to sue you. Got me thinking on the weekend. Actually, a little before the weekend. While they're trying to politicize the Catholic Church. That the president can't get communion. He doesn't believe in abortion, but he defends the right of, always I do. We're here to look at what we can do, and I think we have to have something. We have to get something writing. An ordinance has to be done. We're dealt the hand we got, levy limits, which I don't agree with. We have to work within that. And Joe, on a fear of, uh, what we could, the sue, being sued, what re, what could we all be sued on? The whole thing?
Yeah, that's.
The whole thing?
I mean, that's, just trying to be, I guess, extra conservative about the matter, is that if, if we were sued on the whole thing, and the whole thing had to go away.
I, I don't know if we could, if that, we could lose that, but.
If, if, if the whole thing were to go away, I guess the, as, as staff, our, our objective was to try to present something to the common council that, worst-case scenario, we're no worse off than we are today. We, we could go back to special assessments, we can go back to borrowing. You know, it, and, and so it's not, it's not out of fear, it's just trying to be, you know, just conservative so that if the worst thing happens, we're operating no different than we are today.
It's, yeah, and it's, you know, we all took out the graph that we had, that you guys had here several meetings ago, even on.
Yeah.
Age of the Streets.
Right.
And you want to get to that.
Thirty.
The 30-year one going across.
Yep, 30 miles every decade.
Or whatever. We got a ways to go. A long ways to go, to be sustainable. We have to, to get there, we have to start. You know, somewhere you have to hook that horse up, get that wagon moving. And like I said, when I started this spiel here, it's been 30 years trying to get the assessments fixed. So you weren't stuck with that 12 and $15,000 bill. Well, guess what? For 30 years, I failed on it. They're still there. Let's try a different route. Let's try a different route, see what we can do. I failed on the assessment one. This can take care of it. Because you know what? Satisfy. I don't know, Joe, how many people are in the assessment? 30 a year or whatever it is?
Yeah, I was just going to try to do the math on that, but you know what, if, if a house has a, say, a 75 to 100-foot frontage, you're doing a mile times two, you know, you're, you're looking at 50, 60 people every year.
That, that, that hasn't been a sell to the people, that hasn't been a sell to the people in the community, I guess. It wasn't, it wa, hasn't been a, a sell to the people in the community to level out the field. The people with a new road, they didn't want to, why should I? And if the road's ready to break up, maybe it's time to move where they have a newer road. That's where we've, have not taken care, or been willing to take care of all of our people in the community. We say we are, but too many times it's been just me. I think it's time that we step forward, we jump into this, we get the draft of what's our attorney says, comes up with, is what is right. We bring this back here to put something on. One of the things I don't like in referendums is, and that type of thing, is that you have to have a group that wants to support it. Because you know you have a group that's going to be there against it all the way. So if you want to get something, you just can't just say, here it is. You have to have your talking points of why this is good. And this is going to be a complicated issue. Maybe granted to have, maybe the entire state to do something, but that ain't going to happen either. We're having a hard time amongst ourselves in Rapids trying to do something. Can you imagine the county, what they'd try to do? They'd probably just say, well, let's have Rapids be the guinea pig and see what they can come up with, and maybe we'll just see what they do. Let's get the wording and see what it is. We don't like what's there. Then you know what we do? Throw it out the window. That's it. We got to have some, we got to, you know, we got to get to the point of, what are we talking about and arguing about? Well, I have something there to argue about, I guess, even to start with. So that's basically what I, I think have to say, and I was making some notes, but it just is, uh, uh, you know, to me, if it's $86 or $100, something like that, whatever, that I have to pay extra for my tax bill versus me getting 12 or 15 or whatever thousand dollars in a shot like that. I'd rather pay that $86 or $100 extra and be able to do, get more streets done and whatever, and hopefully we can get to that 30-year level at some point in time. Because there's a big catastrophe that this city, a big catastrophe that this city is facing. And I don't know what the numbers, vehicles drive on it every day. Joe, you got to probably summon an idea, but, uh, A Street, that's on the Public Works agenda too, as referred.
It is.
That is waiting to collapse. That's going to be a, and if somebody's waiting for the state to throw in the money, that you think that's going to come, we've been trying, and it ain't. That, that street is over 50 years old. It's long past its lifespan. We got a lot of problems. So I think everybody better buckle up. And this ain't a free ride. And that this is not an easy roller coaster. And that's why they tell you to buckle up. And you got to be able to bite the bullet and take the kicking and screaming. Because A Street is just about done. You can ask anybody. And a grand plan that we had was a bypass to go around, which would have gave us more life on it, going beyond, behind the high school bypass. And that would have gave a lot of visibility to the quad flex. Bypass going around behind it. I'll never see it. Big long tape, tape measure of lifespan lines down to that now. I guess I'll wrap it up there. We, to me, we have to, we have to move forward if we need a motion to do that, or Joe's handed this out, but I think we have to, to me, have to do somewhere to, for us, unless we don't do anything and just drop this. We have to, I, we have to have a, something to act upon, uh, to make a decision or otherwise just do nothing and to get it off the table. To me, it's to get it into legalese that passes the test of legalese. And Joe has put a lot of, I know he's put a lot of time and effort into it. I've talked on the phone a lot, several times and that, just told him what he's been doing and that, and I totally appreciate that, and, uh, it's just, uh, to me, it's something I want to move forward with. The group wants to, that's fine and great with me. I know this is Public Works, that your committee is doing that. Committee whole, uh, the whole is not. We're here to listen to that. I appreciate letting us have to give our input in that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Bemke.
I have a question about these trips. So has any consideration been given to, let's say you have a convenience store on a pretty high-traffic street, and then you've got a convenience store that maybe doesn't see as much traffic? Do we have two separate rates? They all pay the same? How is that going to work?
So I will, I'll get an answer to that. I, I don't know. I, the, the manual that our consultant is using costs about a grand to, it's a institute of, uh, it's, I forget the, the, the actual here, it's, it's in the draft ordinance. It's based on 30 to 40 years' worth of transportation studies. So my speculation is that there are criteria for different, so it's not just a business, it's what size of business, um, what, you know, different categories for how an auto parts store, for example, might generate trips, um, or, or a fast food based on different things. You know, in some cases, those are based on, um, the, the, the square footage of the building. So there's a, a multiplier, you've got a, a constant and a multiplier that depends on, you know, the size, the square footage, um, in some cases, maybe parking areas, things like that, that, um, that it is robust and complete and, and breaks that down. The, the suggestion for using something that has, that's used internationally and has been for years for, for, uh, for transportation design is just that, it's a constant. It, it, it relies very little on, um, on individual subjectivity. It's very objective. And so, um, so, so that's the benefit of using something like that, but I need to find out for sure. So your question is, for example, if there's a, a storefront that's on a busy street versus a storefront that's on maybe a more minor, you know, a connecting highway versus something else. How, how is it differentiated? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I, I guess my concern is, is if you've got, if, if we're going to, and I don't know that convenience store isn't necessarily, it could be fast food, but you've got some places that are kind of on the outskirts and probably don't see the amount of business that some of the bigger and busier places see. But, you know, as you were talking about before, um, you know, they're going to raise the, the cost of their service pennies or whatever. Well, it might be pennies for some places, but the places that don't see that volume may be paying the same, and it may be more than pennies for them. I guess that's my concern.
Yeah, so they may be not categorized correctly or whatever. So you're looking for, what's the differentiation in trips for maybe the same type of business based on their location or how successful they are or something like that?
Yeah, I would say that's pretty close enough. Thank you.
I'll get that answer, and when I get that answer, I'll forward it to the entire common council.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Katnau.
Thank you. One more question that maybe you can bring back to is, a, a lot of this conversation is revolving around shifting a little bit from the residential taxpayers to the commercial. It has a sales tax. Has a sales tax been thought of at all or considered, or why or why not? Would be something I'd like to see some information on too.
Well, so for this situation, because the, the focus is on transportation, I guess the desire, through the discussions at committee and, and so far, has been with the development of a utility, a sales tax is a, is a general tax. Could be used for anything. Whereas transportation utility fees can't be used for anything but transportation. So, so I mean, that was, that was one of the reasons why this, this avenue was the path that was chosen was, we wanted to make sure that if we were looking at doing something, it was for a purpose and not subject to the whims of, you know, the particular needs for the day type of thing, that if there's a pot of money and it's a big pot, well, let's use it for this because this came up. I know the wheel tax is also a, a primarily a burden on residential property owners again, because, you know, a business may or may not own a vehicle. But certainly they aren't likely to own vehicles in proportion of the trips that are, are being generated to their, to their facility. And at the end of the day, the transportation utility is really the only means of raising money that I'm aware of that does result directly in revenues coming from outside the community coming in. You know, whether it's a school district, whether it's churches with members that live outside the community, whether it's, where it's, whether it's businesses and, and and people paying for goods and services. You know, number one is that, is the transportation, the trip method fair? And if you think that is, again, then that's a side effect, is it, is that we are bringing money in from outside the community because we do serve. You know, we're a community of 17,000 that serves almost 50. And, and I think that's important too, that you know, for the city to have a lot of the parks and a lot of the infrastructure and things that people enjoy in the whole region. But it's the folks that live here that are subject to that burden. Unproportional burden, that, that's 70% of the cost. You know, trying to, trying to come up with a balanced method that's as fair as possible, I think, is, is our ultimate goal. And, and I guess the question, the ultimate question here is, is this method fair? I mean, that's the primary question. If, if we can determine that the method is fair, okay. What do you want this method to generate in revenue? To what extent? It could be almost nothing. Could be just special assessments, we could keep borrowing, but if the method is fair, it's a great start. And then, and then what do you want it to pay for? Like I say, the things that we've suggested as staff, we feel that it's a, it's a, it's a balance. Is it the right balance? I think so, but that's not my decision.
See, Evenson.
So with our discussion tonight, obviously, we're not making a motion to do anything, we're just listening, and but what are you, are you looking for us as a council tonight to say, yes, this is something that we want to move forward with?
So the, the agenda item was discuss, discussion regarding the development of a transportation utility. If, if there's a motion to move forward with a transportation utility that utilizes traffic counts as a premise of fairness, then that's some guidance. And, and I can spend some more time and meet with our city attorney and take a look at this, this draft and try to fine tune it. And then the other part is the amount, what, what, what do you want to cover with the transportation utility? What's the goal? You know, spreading out special assessments? This, what, what I've proposed in this draft does that. We want to try to get rid of our, our routine borrowing. This does this. Do we want to work towards a sustainable transportation system? This starts us along that path, doesn't get us there, and quite frankly, like I said, we're not, we're not equipped to snap, you know, flip a switch and be there. This is, this is going to take years, maybe decades. But, but it starts us down the path where the city now has control of its destiny. The state isn't telling you, you can't increase your transportation dollars by whatever, or you're not limiting your bonding capacity for, you know, some important large projects for, for routine, which is what all municipalities are faced with the same issues, they're getting closer and closer to their bonding limits because they have no other, no other way to fund projects and, and routine things, so. So those are kind of the, the two things that I'm looking for is, really in order to proceed and get this done, if we're going to get it done, is, is a direction on the, the method, the trip method, and a direction on what do we want it to cover?
Mr. Blazer.
Thank you. Jake, I believe legislation just recently, not too long ago, passed that cities could do a sales tax, however, you have to be $30,000 in size. So we are too small. And I agree with Mr. Raoul, this is an antiquated system that's been long overdue for all, an overhaul. Many years ago, I had
What year did you buy your house?
I had a special assessment and kind of pick on you. And I, at $86 a year, I still would not have, that was back in early 2000s. Twenty years ago, I still would not have hit my special assessment at $86 a year. So to Mr. Veneman's point, yeah, not everybody's going to see immediate savings, but you probably have seen, or had as many phone calls as I have from, from your residents that are, have a pending special assessment. I think, you know, coming in the next couple of years, those people will see immediate results. And over the course of time, by, as Mr. Terry spoke, that, you know, we're not borrowing anymore, so we're saving those fees, we're saving interest. Those will ultimately directly relate to a savings in our, in our levy. Because anytime we borrow, that, that, that payment is applied to our levy. And so that will be a savings down the road. And it, and as the dust settles and at some point, some court's going to make a ruling. And I think until that point, having that prudent to protect our levy, you know, not to, you know, kind of do what Joe outlined. Is, is that it's safe, but there's going to be an effect and, and that will be spread out over time. And then we can look at the utility down the road and expanding it, hopefully. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to express my support for a transportation utility, specifically for scenario two plus. I feel that a transportation utility is the fairest method of calculating street replacement burden due to fees being based on street usage. A utility can help resolve funding issues that our current special assessment method creates mainly the significant financial burden placed on property owners. This, this issue commonly causes a volatile relationship between city staff and property owners once projects are put in place and financial burden has been calculated or passed down. Rapids is on an unsustainable pace, if we've, as we've talked about, for street maintenance under our current program. Out of 150 or 175 miles of city streets, 108 are at their life expectancy of 40 years or beyond. So the current special assessment program generates approximately $350,000 a year in revenue, which is far less, like we've talked about, than what is spent on street construction annually. So street construction costs that exceed the revenues generated by special assessments, like we've, like we've talked about, are added to the city's general debt obligation and bonded for annually, which adds debt service costs and interest, which significantly increases the cost of street construction or replacement. A transportation utility can allow our city to truly plan for the future by helping generate the funds necessary to support our annual street replacement budgets. A utility can help lower the city's current street construction debt obligation and debt service fees over time. Utility can, will allow for flexibility in funding that can help our street replacement program become more sustainable and would put in place a system that uses decades of nationwide research with proven data that calculates fair costs for street replacement obligation for property owners. So a transportation utility would provide a consistent charge for residents and businesses that can be budgeted for, once implemented. The higher fees that would be issued to businesses with larger trip calculations can be offset by passing down costs to customers. This brings into play the scenario where non-residents patronizing local businesses would help contribute to funding our city's street repairs. So with that being said, and correct me if I need additional language, I would like to make a motion to move forward with a trip-based utility and begin drafting an ordinance and policy language wherein, number one, maintenance activities remain in the general fund for now. Number two, current rate of capital replacement projects are performed by the utility, eliminating the routine transportation project-related debt and special assessments. And number three, include $450,000 worth of asphalt surface replacement funded through a transportation utility, allowing for generally between .5 and one mile of additional surface replacement per year.
And is this motion part of committee, the whole, or is this Public Works?
This would be Public Works.
Public Works, okay. And Sue Schill did have her hand up, I don't know if she still wants to say something.
Go ahead, Sue.
So we have motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. I guess we can move on to item number three, which is adjournment, I will entertain a motion. For adjournment. I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. We are adjourned, 6:15 PM.